That's when I delivered the first jet to Tindall, right there. I don't know where they got that footage, but it's kinda cool. I don't know what our 49th public affairs folks did a real nice job on this. So, we're going to the one and only fifth generation fighter. And the first thing I need to tell you is that there are very few locations that are blessed to have an opportunity to get this airframe. And it's really because of folks like you, airspace, and frankly, this environment, that the Chief of Staff of our Air Force decided to put the F-22 here. So, it's really exciting for me and hopefully for you that we're now transitioning to that mission. But to get to that point, we still have a lot of work to do. So, in the meantime, our vision is to ensure that we've got professional airmen ready to get out the door because we still have a fight that's ongoing right now. We want to be able to deliver combat air power anytime, anywhere. And primarily right now, we're doing that with airmen and other capabilities that is available to us on the base. Next slide. What we've put together is essentially three different pillars that we're focused upon. And I'll expand on these here in a moment. One is to support expeditionary operations. The Air Force, as you know, is expeditionary by definition. We gotta be ready to pack up and go. And typically, the way we used to do that was, and you all probably remember, we saw the F-17s, they packed up as 12 or 18 jets, take all the airmen, and then send them off to Iraqi Freedom, Enduring Freedom, whatever the operation is that's out there. Well, we also need to be able to do that with our airmen. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit later here about how we package our airmen teams up to send them out the door to continue to support those expeditionary operations. Second point, we're working through the transition as we speak right now. We're through the first major half of it, which was Saint Divide to 117. And I'll talk to that a little bit more here. The next part, and right now, we're in full afterburner trying to get ready for the F-22. And I'll talk more to that here in a second. Meanwhile, we wanna make sure that throughout this entire process, we're looking out for each other and taking care of not only our young airmen, but also their families, and at the same time contributing to the community. So, that's all pieces of the puzzle that puts together this vision that we set out for our airmen out there. Next slide. So, let me first spend a little time alluding and explaining to what the AEF is. That's our Air Expeditionary Force. Like I alluded to, in the past, we have typically put a squadron together, put them together to train. Generally, we'll do that by exercising them, and then we put them on standby to deploy in a specific window. Now, we're doing that same thing with different airmen working in different functional areas. Our, I'll call them cops, they like to be called defenders, they're on the road quite a bit, and we basically give them about 179-day window that we're gonna say, "Hey, you gotta be ready to go." And now, what we've gone to is a packaging concept that allows them to know when they're gonna be in the window to deploy, so that they're in a position to first train to get ready for it, then they deploy, then they have a post piece of it where they're now getting reintegrated back into the base, get their training back up to speed, and focus on some of the other issues that they hadn't been able to take care of while they were downrange. Other functional areas that we package include our intelligence officers, airmen, our explosive ordinance folks. We have our civil engineers are along that same kind of pathing. And so, again, the goal is to be able to put them together, pack them, we send them out for training, and then they may or may not get tasked depending upon what the needs are of the combat commanders downrange. So, that's essentially what our AEF concept is. As far as preparing our airmen so that they're ready to deploy, clearly, we have training regimes that they need to go to. In fact, some of them are now tasked to support Army operations where they're actually going and doing some of the jobs that the Army doesn't have the manpower to do. We call those joint sourcing solutions. So, we've got airmen that go downrange, do everything from driving convoys to walking the perimeter, essentially being infantrymen. So, that takes a different skill set than we have typically trained them with, so we send them off for about two months to get prepared to do that. So that when they go downrange, they're ready to go and prepared to take care of missions. And meanwhile, while we're doing that, we've got an eye on their families and making sure their families have everything they need, whether it be on the base or having access to some of the facilities you have downtown, so that they can stay engaged with not only the community, but with what we're doing on the base. So, like I alluded to, I've got airmen first class, Carla Jimenez, here with me this evening, and she's gonna talk to you a little bit about her experience, not only at Holloman, but also what she did while she was in Afghanistan.
I am airmen first class, Carla Jimenez. I grew up in Boston, Massachusetts. A year and three months ago, I joined the Air Force for the benefits it had to offer, such as the money, 100% tuition assistance for school, and being able to travel to places I'd never thought I'd be in. Basic training was very difficult for me. I honestly didn't know what I signed up for, but as tech school rolled around, everything seemed to fall into place. I got to learn various things in tech school, and I was very eager to excel in my future career. When I received orders to Holloman, I wasn't very thrilled, same because I'm from the city, but I've come to love it. After all, it is the friendliest place on earth. After arriving at Holloman, I was enrolled into the first-term airmen course offered to new airmen for introduction into the military leg. I was tasked to deploy overseas after three months. Naturally, I was a little scared, but really excited. My orders were to report to the 819th First Expeditionary Red Horse Squadron in Bagram, Afghanistan. Once I arrived in Afghanistan, they immediately put me to work. The Red Horse Group does not waste any time when there's work to be done. I got a chance to work on an air traffic operations center where I was able to do various jobs that involved my career field as a carpenter, such as drywall, drop ceiling, floor tiles, and so on. I was also able to have the opportunity to work on a project called the Charlie Ramp, which is corned concrete for the flatline. A Red Horse tradition is to throw the new airmen into the concrete, and naturally, I was thrown in. There's one thing to be here in the States doing your job, but overseas, being deployed, it is completely different. Your job is more mission essential, and it must be done. I'm greatly honored to have been a part of all that. One of my most memorable moments was when we were working on the Block 12 project, and an F-15 jet was preparing to take off. If I were 30 feet taller, I swear I could've touched it with my bare hands. That's how low they flew over us. It was the greatest sensation I've ever felt, having the jet take off so close to you, considering a year ago, the closest I've been to a fighter jet would've been through a movie screen. I've experienced many things in my first year in the Air Force. I'm excited for the years to come. My future goals are to get a nursing degree and earn a commission. If everything goes as planned, I will make the US Air Force a career and retire 20 years, God willing. With hard work and dedication, I believe that I'll have no problem accomplishing my goals. Thank you very much, and it is an honor to serve my mission.
The next flow that I alluded to was working through the transition, and this is a major muscle movement for us out there as we go from the F-117 to the F-22. Many of you probably saw on the paper as just this past week, we launched off our last four F-117s. A truly historic weapon system that did great things for our nation. I can tell you from many of the people that came up and talked with me that they felt very privileged and had great pride in that airframe. I know several people were there on the day that those airplanes came into town and were there the day that the jet left. And so, our goal is to instill that same type of pride and build that same type of camaraderie and pride and ownership, if you will, with the F-22. So, I said we had several events to recognize that legacy. In fact, the last piece of it, we went out to Palmdale and went back to the plant where they did a lot of the design and met with, I think, all but one of the program managers that helped design and build the airplane, and then afforded them one more opportunity to see the jets, as then they went back up to Tonopah. The jets are now gonna be all stored up in Tonopah, just north of Las Vegas. Should the President or whomever decide that he wants to put them into action, that possibility will remain there. So, that was how we approached that piece of it. We're now moving forward to the F-22. You got a glimpse of the capabilities of the airplane, and I'll talk more through that here in a minute. What I'll point out to you is that for the last couple of years, we've had a core team of individuals that have been responsible for essentially putting together the plan of bedding down this weapon system. Everything from facilities to refurbishing, many of the hangars that F-117 were in, to changing some of our locations for where we'll have operations, all those pieces of it, along with some upgrades to our airfield, have all been part of it. Due to the timeline, frankly, we're a little bit behind, and we're trying to catch up. We've got workarounds in place. We will be ready in the first week of June to receive our first two airplanes. And our goal over the course of the next about six weeks is to get everybody up to speed on understanding what the mission is with the F-22 and how they contribute to that mission. So, that's what we mean by an inspired transition, ensuring that from day one, we're ready to operate. Excellent. Third piece of it has to do with taking care of each other, and that's not only our airmen, but also the families associated with those airmen. Clearly, while we're in this transition timeframe, while we're waiting to get more airplanes, we're gonna have some opportunities for our airmen to not only professionally develop themselves through courses that they do on base, but also a good chance for them to work on some of their higher education goals, i.e. going to college, those type of things. So, we're working that aggressively out there and making sure they understand what's available to them, not only on base, but also within the community. As far as the families are concerned, we look at both the pre-deployment, while they're deployed, and the post-deployment phase of it. I've talked a little bit about the training that we do for the airmen themselves. We also provide some educational opportunities for the spouses to make sure they understand what's available not only on the base, but also what's available downtown. My wife participates in something that we call Heartlink, where we bring the wives in and basically walk them through, particularly the young wives, everything that's available on the base. As the airmen are deployed, again, we typically have within their squadron organizations direct communications with them while they're deployed, so if something should happen, they have somebody to reach back into in the squadron. Because as everybody knows, as soon as you leave, that's when the refrigerator breaks, the car breaks down, and you need some help. And that's the types of relationships that we're trying to foster. Then, when the airmen come back and we reintegrate them, we give them a couple of weeks off to spend with their family. We offer them, as many of you know, there's a lot of post-traumatic issues that are arising, much more in the Army, but in the Air Force. We are very fortunate to have one of the few pilot programs where we had a relationship counselor available for the family, so they can get together and talk about any issues they're having, having just returned from downrange. So, we also use that as another opportunity to get them to talk about what happened to them and get them to discuss those issues that might be affecting them on the family side of the house. Other quality of life initiatives that I'll talk to here in a minute will be our privatized housing. That's something we're going through right now and in the process of building homes and upgrading homes, and I'll address that here in a minute. Next slide. Let me hit some of the key tasks that we have in front of us, and some of them are bigger challenges than other, but I wanna make sure you get a sense of some of the issues that we're discussing. I'll hit on the F-22 arrival here in a minute, I've got a specific slide of that. Another major muscle movement, that's how I'll address it, is we are essentially reorganizing our wing structure. The Chief of Staff has directed that we take the vast majority of our maintainers and put them underneath our operations. And so, across, for those of you that were in the Air Force, we're going back to the way we did it like three times ago. So, we've gone through a couple iterations of this, but this is no easy task. It takes preparation, thought, and you need to make sure you get it right, or there will be inefficiencies that will occur because we missed something. So, timeframe-wise, you'll see we're looking at October, November of this year to execute that, and that will be a fairly significant emotional event for everybody out there at the base, because it pretty much affects all across the board for particularly the leadership. Another key task that I've been working through, and Gerald Goldfein started this, and I'm gonna label it as regional engagement. I think everybody knows that Fort Bliss is growing exponentially, about 35,000 more soldiers down there over the course of the next eight to 10 years. White Sands is gonna get about another 5,000. And clearly, as we are transitioning to the F-22, the way we utilize this magnificent airspace and land space is gonna change. So, to ensure that we don't end up arguing over who gets to use what, the three leaders, myself, Brigadier General McCabe from White Sands, Major General Bromberg, have met once, then we put a team together to talk about how we're gonna smartly and efficiently use this air and land space that's available to us. In fact, later this week, this team of individuals is gonna present us a recommended course of action to achieve that transparency and ensure that we have a plan put together so that we can efficiently grow these missions and leverage what we each bring to the fight. We look at this as a great opportunity to really showcase this premier environment to train as a joint team. There are honestly very few locations across the Department of Defense where you're able to put Army and Air Force folks right next to each other and on a daily basis train, where we're now able to understand in a face-to-face dialogue what we're trying to achieve when we go out and we train to fight, and they're maneuvering on the ground where we would be supporting them. So, that's where we're going with this. We wanna make sure that, number one, our staffs are all on the same sheet of music, so that's why we gave them some initial direction. They put together a plan, and now they're giving us feedback. In July, the next step will be to take this plan basically to the three- and four-star general level. My boss, General Syke, from Tucson, will come out, and he'll get together with some of the Army leadership to make sure we're all on the same sheet of music and marching down this engaged triad as a team, as opposed to us going off and doing separate things. Frankly, we all realize that for us to get the most out of this, we need to work together and have, our hopes is a joint team that lives together and builds schedules so that we optimize the air and land space to get the most out of it. So, that to me is an essentially important task, that we've had concrete action, we're continuing to move out on that, and we need to keep the momentum that we've gained over the last couple of months to make sure we keep moving on this. I think I hit on the AEF support. Like I said, while we're doing all this, nothing's gonna change. We're gonna keep sending airmen out the door to support the global war on terror. Some of the quality of life initiatives that we wanna sustain and even expand if able is our Adopt an Airmen program. On our side, we're gonna do a better job of trying to get the word out so that you are able to engage with some of our young airmen and have an opportunity to face-to-face talk with them about their experiences, give them a chance to get off the base. So, we're gonna work together with the community to try to foster that, to allow our airmen to have a good opportunity to sit down with you and talk to you about what you're doing and what they've been doing, not only on the base, but also while they've been deployed. Several people on the radio station have asked me if I'm gonna continue the friendliest place on earth mantra. Yes, I am. From what I've heard, you can give me any feedback. It sounds like there's a lot of people that enjoy using that. It appears that it's a healthy environment that everybody seems to enjoy, and frankly, it really does put a smile on most people's face when they bring that up. So, it's my intent to keep moving out on that, and we'll use it on our webpage and make sure that we continue to communicate with your senior leaders to keep us all marching down the same path and making sure that not only those in New Mexico, but even our folks outside of the area realize how friendly the folks are in this environment. Because, trust me, there are a lot of people that realize that this community really is a great place to bring our airmen to. And even those kids that are moving here from the big cities, once they get in this environment, they realize that this is really the friendliest place on earth, and it's a great place to be stationed. Another initiative that started about a year ago is what we call our Customer College. And I make you aware of this because essentially what it is, is an opportunity to educate your folks about how to provide better service, how to have a smile on your face when somebody is telling you you screwed it up. And so, what we've tried to do is invest in our airmen across the wing to help them understand that service mindset. So, it's not just the folks that are behind the desk when you go to have a personnel function accomplished, but it's an attitude that runs across the base. And we've opened that up for folks that you might want to bring into that, to try to inculcate that across your organization, because we see that as a real good opportunity for us to not only exchange some of our best practices, but clearly to get some of your insights to that also. Privatized Housing. Basically, an Air Force initiative that is moving out all across our Air Force. At this time, if you haven't been out to the base recently, we've got probably upwards of about 30 houses that are now starting to take shape. The intent in the long term is all about taking care of our airmen and doing it at the best price available for the US Air Force and our Department of Defense. In the big picture, we originally had 1,500 homes out there on the base. We're coming down to just over 900. And that was based on a study that was accomplished that was gonna look at the wing, our population, and what the requirement is. Now, I understand there's probably some impact, and clearly, the downtown piece is something that, as we transition, move to this privatized housing, that I want you to be aware of, because that's what we're going through right now. Several of our airmen are basically gonna show up and will, in some cases, offer them places on base, and they'll have to wait to move into some of the new homes, and some of them are just gonna go downtown. We're not forcing upon anybody where they have to go. And that's essentially how we're working through that right now. As far as the timeline, we're expecting the first 50 houses to be done somewhere this fall, and then we'll move into the next bunch as we get into '09. So, it's a concerted effort. I have really very little influence into it, other than I get updates from the corporation that's contracted by the Air Force. So, that's where we stand, but in the long term, there's a lot of goodness for our airmen in it, and that if you haven't seen some of our old housing, it needed to be updated. It wasn't very nice, and we needed to do a better job of taking care of our airmen. Did I say that in words that weren't so bad? Okay. All right. Next slide. If you'll look at this, then, this kinda gives you a visual depiction of where we're at. Like you see there, from May through September is where we will be deploying the largest amount of our airmen. You'll see as we get into the fall, for everybody's reference, we'll get two F-22s in June, and we use those airplanes primarily to train our maintainers. Now, we're gonna fly those airplanes, but I'm gonna have a couple hundred maintainers that I need to get trained, because once we get to about January of '09, we're gonna start getting a couple of jets each month. It may be one, it may be two, it may be three airplanes per month. So, I need to make sure I have enough maintainers as we bring those airplanes on to support our operations. So, these first couple of months will be extremely important for us in terms of maximizing our time on that airplane. One of the key events we're striving for right now is in December. We're gonna bring down some F-22s, hopefully from Alaska. They're gonna deploy out of here. I think some of you will recall back, at least when I flew F-15s here, they used to bring down F-16s from Hill and from other locations to get out of the bad weather and come here and fly during the winter because the weather's so good. So, we're gonna try to reinvigorate that plan, and this is our first opportunity to work through some of our F-22 mission employment type scenarios. So, that's our intent there, and then rolling into the arrivals that will occur essentially all through '09 and into '10 as we build from our two jets all the way up to 40 airplanes, which is what we'll have for the wing of F-22s. Slide. Right now, 6th of June is when myself and the 7th Fighter Squadron Commander will fly the two F-22s. The intent is to also bring in the F-22 demo. So, you guys saw on that film, the airplane where he goes up and he kinda does that little loop, and then he does those things an airplane's not supposed to do. My goal is to work with Bill Burke and his team to have the demo done up by the Mesa Verde Ranch, and have Bill's guys put the demo guys on the radio so you can listen to it and watch the demo. That's the plan right now. We're still working that, the details out, and as I get more information, we'll get the word out to everybody. My PA team will make sure all of Al Macordo in the basin knows about it, so you can come out and enjoy this impressive airplane. I'm telling you, this airplane does things that no other jet can do, and you'll get to see it up close and personal, and it's gonna be your little jet that lives right here in the basin. So, that'll be a great opportunity. We're also hoping that on the 6th, the Chief of Staff of the Air Force will announce what we call our Total Force Integration. Previously, the intent was to have an Air National Guard unit associated with the 49th. That's no longer going to occur for various reasons. We'll now have the Air Force Reserve associated with the 49th Wing. So, we're hoping on that day that the Chief will be able to make it and make that announcement. Again, that brings about 250 more positions to the wing and to the area. So, again, goodness with the F-22 and for our area in terms of bringing a few more jobs into the local area. So, we hope that will happen on the 6th also. I'm happy to answer any questions on any of these or any other issues you might have that hopefully I or my team standing back here can help you with.
I was wondering about the security issues, the sensitivity of such a modern plane. Can we anticipate that security measures will be different than the current?
It'll be as close to, if not exactly the same, as the F-117. The classifications of the 117 are very similar to the F-22. Early on with the F-22, it was a little sensitive. Now, we're to the point where, trust me, I will open it up to make sure I get as many of you out there to come and look at what you have invested in, because really, you have, and this is yours as much as it is the Air Force. So, I wanna make sure you have an opportunity to go see this, because it really is a beautiful airplane.
Will those reservists integrate to your wing, or will they... Will those Reserve us integrate into your wing, or will they be in the [inaudible]?
They will. Actually, the way we're going to work is instead of being their own wing, they're going to have what we believe right now will be the 301st Fighter Squadron, that will have their folks integrated in the Seventh and Eighth. So administratively, they'll have a squadron commander, but those folks will all live inside the Seventh and Eighth Fighter Squadrons. And then they'll have what they call an ops group commander, who will have administrative control over not only the pilots, but then the maintainers and support folks. So there will not be a full-up wing.
How the Reserve, those 250, are, how many are active, are working full-time?
To be determined. The, like I said, I have yet to actually, they just named the commander, this Colonel, but he hasn't been here yet, or I haven't actually had a chance to talk with him. This upcoming week is our site activation, SCA, as they call it, will be our first opportunity to interface with those guys and get a better feel for exactly what percentages they're striving for and how they're going to walk through this whole [inaudible].
Other than the security police and the cops, what Air Force specialties are they going to deploy to the Afghan and Iraq and theater, as well as any other?
The most stressed career fields, like I said, our defenders are probably the highest, and then our explosive ordnance guys, EOD, our CE folks, right, the folks going to Afghanistan and Iraq to build things, we are shuffling them out the door, they can't get enough of them. Our intel, our analysts and [inaudible] type of people are basically to do all the assessment and then buy information back.
PA?
PA, yeah. I can't see a PA person here, so I go through them like crazy. Yeah, and then our LRS folks, and primarily, they're going over there driving convoys. In fact, there's some amazing stories those airmen come back with, you know, because they drive literally thousands and thousands of miles in their time there. I think we just had one come back that we gave him a Purple Heart, and another guy got a Bronze Star. So, man, I'm telling you, when they're joining the Air Force, they're not going out there and just turning wrenches and flying jets. They're really doing everything we can to support the war.
Yes, sir. What is going to happen to the night?
Good question. It is not, at this point, totally going away. The Chief has said we're going to start with the Seventh and Eighth. I would tell you, you know, while we support the President's budget, you know, if we ever get any more Raptors, that would be an option. Fundamentally, right now, though, we're kind of sitting on it, not totally deactivating, but just in it activating, awaiting further words. So we'll stand by to see what happens as far as other mission growth here while we're going through that now. We can talk about the historical legacy and some of those things, and basically, when the team comes down and says, "These are the squadrons," and says, "Yes, sir, got it," and we get on with it. Well, let me thank you all for taking the time to come out here. I hope this was helpful. If there's any other questions that come up, please feel free to contact my PA guys, and they know where to find me, they know where I try to hide out. So I'll be happy to get you those answers as we go down this path. I, like I said, look forward to bringing the F-22 into town here. I hope you develop the same type of relationship with it that you did with the F-117, because I know how the base would do. We'd greatly appreciate that.